I'm going to call the Town of Atherton City Council June 18th, 2025, regular meeting at 6:00 PM to order. May I have the pledge of allegiance, please? Let's stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the highest.
May I have the roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Hawkins, Degolia.
Yes.
Widmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Holland.
Sure.
Mayor Lewis.
I'm here. Thank you so much. Our next item is a very wonderful presentation from our arborist, Sally Benz. She's going to present the Town of Atherton Tree Awards for 2025. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you. Just one moment. My name is Sally Benz Dalton. I'm the town arborist with the Town of Atherton, and it's been about five years since we did the Tree Awards, and we got a pretty good turnout, so that's great. And tonight, the award winners will be getting a certificate, a gift card to Colette, and a nice painted oak note card, so to incentivize the Tree Awards. So I first wanted to briefly go over what the Tree Committee is. The Tree Committee is not a town committee, but it's a volunteer-based, community-based committee that meets quarterly, that works on the preservation of heritage trees in town, and educating the public in Atherton on the importance of trees. We do have a few members of the -- Joan and Betsy are here tonight representing the Tree Committee, and I sent out all the applications to the Tree Committee, and we reviewed them together. And then, just a reminder that a heritage tree is any tree in town that's 15 inches in diameter or greater, at 54 inches, so about this size. So we protect any tree in town that size. So now we'll present the award winners. So for best cared-for tree, we have two nominations and two winners. So the first winner is 156 Hawthorne for a beautiful fig. You can go to the next slide. So this is 156 Hawthorne, a very old fig that has been pollarded for many years. I've never seen a fig this large, and it's in beautiful condition. And so would you like to come up and get your award, Joan?
Sally, how old do you think this tree is?
I mean, maybe 40, 40 more years, yeah. The flood estate, we'll be looking at one of the trees in the flood estate, and that was 100 years old, so.
Did the owner plant it?
Did you plant that tree?
Well, I've been taking care of it for 54 years, and it looked like the tree that I started, so I'm 100 years old.
That's so amazing. Thank you, Joan, for your care.
So we have another winner in the best cared-for tree, and that's 158 Glenwood for a coastlive oak, which I have seen in person, and I was actually pretty blown away by this tree. It is the straightest oak tree I have seen, and this award will go to Bill Widmer.
Councilmember Widmer, awesome. So I understand Councilmember Widmer planted this tree as a little boy.
How old do you think this tree is, Sally?
Oh, I mean, that's at least 100 years old. I mean, it's pretty big, but there's bigger --
100 years.
I have an older one.
It's just well-cared-for. He does have an older tree on the corner of his property, but yeah, this one is just looks very well.
I'll submit that one next year.
Next slide. So we have two winners for the largest tree. The first tree is 96 Redwood. Don't sleep on 96 -- don't sleep on Redwood Way, because there's actually a lot of really nice trees on Redwood Way. This tree is huge. The canopy of the tree takes up about a third of the property. I mean, it's amazing. It provides a lot of shade. I'm not sure, I don't think they're here. They might be on Zoom, but that award will go to 96 Redwood. The next one. 46 Lowry, this is one of the largest Japanese maples I've seen. It's very well-cared-for. It's, you can see it from the front of the yard, and so the residents here weren't able to make it, but we can still give them their award. I will be mailing them their gifts.
I know. Can you tell us their names?
They don't want to be disclosed. Yeah, I just got permission to give people's addresses and the location of the --
Got it. Got it.
Next category is great beauty specimen tree, and that will go to 90 Virginia. I mean, this Japanese maple is amazing, both in fall and in winter. The resident is, I think she's out of town, but yeah, she really appreciated. Her arborist actually submitted the award for her, because he's never seen a Japanese maple like this before, so yeah, so she loves this tree and plans to keep it, even though it's very close to her house. So that one was great. And the next one, 87 Linden, actually one of their neighbors submitted an award for this tree, and I contacted the resident, and he is also not available to make the meeting, but he was really happy to receive the award. He said they brought the property because of this tree, so it's a beautiful tree. You can see it from the road. It's a valley oak. It was nice to see multiple species of tree represented in the Tree Awards, so good for them. I'll be mailing them their award. And then, for old-time survivor category, we have the Linden Flood Median, which is an HOA and town-maintained tree. So this is one of the trees that was planted in the 1930s by Mr. Flood. He wanted to have a different entrance to the flood estate, so he planted a row of deer-darceeders, but then he passed away before they could open that entrance. But there are still some there. Joan has pointed some more trees that were along the path, but most of them are gone. So we're really giving this award to us and the HOA for just keeping this beauty alive. Anthony will be getting the gift card. And our last category, this year we had lots of categories, but this is our last one. The most unusual goes to 149 Hawthorne. We just decided that it would be the most unusual planting, which you're probably aware of this lot. It's the palm collection at 149 Hawthorne. You can't miss it. Even though a lot of those palms are not unique, it's just unique to have a planting like that in your front yard in Atherton. So she will be getting that award, and she wasn't able to make it either. So last slide. So just thank you to all the people that turned in the awards. It's something fun that I get to do for the town, so thank you.
Thank you, Sally, for all of that. And it's just a beautiful -- yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that Atherton is known for its beautiful tree-lined streets and homes with lots of acreage to grow flora and fauna, and we do have to care for our trees. Thank you all for doing that for us. We go now to our public comment period. Yes, John, did you want to make a comment? Come on up.
I haven't heard of a tree-related comment.
Yes, come on up, so we can hear you, and make sure that the mic is on, please. Yes, John Walfash. There you go.
No, I just thought it would be nice to create a brochure or catalog of the winning trees, maybe this year and whatever past years there are, and have it in one place, so people could see it, see the addresses, and go see it.
What a good idea. Thank you. Run that up the flagpole, see what happens.
It's usually Joan that comes up with the ideas.
I know. They've been spending a lot of time together, though, so it rubbed off on him. Okay, so now's the time for public comments, and this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, but it has to be within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that are not on the agenda, so at this time, if anyone wants to spend three minutes speaking on anything not on the agenda, please come to the podium.
We have Mr. Michael Ochoa.
Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Michael Ochoa. How are you guys doing? Good. So my name is Michael Ochoa, and I'm a representative of the carpenters Local 217 out of San Mateo County. I'm here tonight to introduce a prequalification ordinance document that will help Atherton make sure our public construction projects are done by responsible, qualified, and community-based contractors. This ordinance applies to larger projects, those worth more than $1 million or more. It sets clear rules for who can bid on these jobs, so we can get the best value for our tax dollars and support good jobs right here in our community. Here's what it does. First, to make sure contractors use state-approved apprenticeship programs, this means workers are properly trained and safe on the job. Second, it encourages hiring local workers to keep jobs and money in our community, stay in our own community. And then, third, it requires contractors to provide health care for workers so that they stay healthy and productive. These are public work projects, so that the health care cost is already added in the prevailing wages. This is about building smarter, safer, and stronger while supporting local workers and using our public funds wisely. I ask for your support by putting this ordinance on an agenda item. Let us invest in Atherton's future together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, any online? Nothing online? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is disclosure of ex parte communications. City council members should disclose any communications that they have had to any member of the public or on any agenda item at this time, and I think we also want to know the name of the person that you spoke to. Any member? Diana?
I spoke --
Put your microphone down, so we can hear you.
I spoke with two members of ADAM.
And they were?
They were President Susan Warren and other --
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the council of ex parte communications? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close that item, and we go to the departmental written reports, which is in your agenda packet, and it contains written reports from the town's various departments, and staff is present to answer any questions that the council or any member of the public may have. Do I have any member of the public want to speak on the departmental written reports? Seeing none, any member of the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the report out of closed session. Let City Attorney Mona Ibrahim.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. The council did meet in closed session. There was no public comment in advance of doing so. The council had directed me to prepare an item. It's reflected as item number 15, and the council will be making a formal decision at that appropriate time.
Thank you so much. Let's see. The next, we'll go on to our consent agenda items, 1 through 8 at this time, and these are typically items that are routine in nature and can be taken in one motion. I'll open it up to the members of the public. Does any member of the public have a question or a comment on items 1 through 8? Please come to the dais. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Is there any member of the council who has any questions or comments on items 1 through 8? Seeing none, I'll close that and call for a motion to accept a consent agenda.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar items, number 1 and through number 8.
Councilmember Widmer made the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
We've got a second from Councilmember Degolia. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously with all members present. Our next item is the public hearing, items 9 through 10, 9 and 10, there's only two of them. And the first item is a public hearing pursuant to Government Code Section 3502.3 to receive a report on the Town of Atherton's vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. So I believe our deputy city manager, city clerk Anthony Suber, is going to give the report. Just for everybody's awareness, that this is a new requirement from the state of California. We've never had this before, and so the recommendation is that council receive and file the information report on the Town of Atherton vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts pursuant to Government Code Section 3502.3. Anthony, you want to give the background?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This will be very brief. As you know, we provide an update to council at every single regular committee meeting, council meeting, and we identify basic retention goals, basic recruitment opportunities, and we provide some details related to the full-time employees that we have here in town. This report is basically sharing that we don't have much of an issue with retention in the Town of Atherton. We've had very few turnover over the last several years, and I think that's a testament to the community that we serve, but there are some data that we wanted to share and provide some updates. Currently, we have two openings, one's in the police department, the other's in the public works department. Our police department are actively right now sourcing candidates for that. We run a continuous recruitment for police officers and dispatchers, so that we can maintain a bench of candidates, so to speak, and our public works department has a recent opening due to someone leaving the town, and so we just began those activities and those efforts, and we've already sourced a few possible candidates. The staff report kind of outlines the town's HR policy, and there are some details in there related to how we handle recruitment, how we handle retention, and job screening, hiring, things of that matter. There's not a whole lot to deal with there, but as you noted, this is a new requirement that was passed in 2024. All cities within the San Mateo County, Santa Clara County are bringing these items to council, some with retention challenges and some with vacancy rates above 20%. So they have more to do in terms of their reporting. They're going to have to report out on changes and how they're dealing with this and how they're managing it and those types of things, but we don't have to make any of those changes because we're in a really favorable position. With that, I can take any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Deputy Clerk. So I'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments on this item number nine, at the public hearing for the Assembly Bill AB 2561. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Does any council member have a question? Or Anthony? Any comments? Okay. Vice Mayor.
Those are in order for George and the chief for running an operation that has such high -- lack of turnover is a big deal, and it should get some credit for that.
Absolutely. And I think that's reflected in his city manager's review that week.
Preview for later, guys.
George, did you want to make a comment? No? Okay. So do we need a motion? We're just receiving and filing the information report, or we need a motion to approve it?
There's no action required, but.
Receive and file.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. So going on to item number 10, which is to -- wow, this is going to take a long time to do this. We have seen this item in front of you for the first half of the year. One of the things that George and his staff and Anthony and Robert Barone III, Finance Director, does, one of the things they do is, beginning like in February or so, they start feeding us little bite-sized pieces of the big budget, and we have meeting after meeting, and we go through it very detailed, make changes, and go through. So this is probably the fifth time that we will see this document, and we're here to adopt and adopt the budget, ratify it, and the GAN limit appropriations, and the Town Master Fee Schedule all in one. There are five resolutions that accompany this budget adoption. We can ratify all of those in one motion. We don't have to take them one at a time. So at this time, I would like to present it to any members of the public who may have a question on the 2526 budget that's in front of us. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Does any member of the council have a question that they want to bring up at this time? Any comments?
Robert did a great job.
Robert Barone III. Robert Avadia did a great job with the public work section.
Robert Barone did a terrific job on the budget.
Okay.
And Robert Avadia contributed, as did George, okay? He's fighting anybody.
Thank you.
Okay? But I thought Robert has done a terrific job since he's been here. Robert B. has been on a terrific job since he's been here and since 2012, and we're happy to have him here. So thank you very much. You've really improved things, and I think we're one of the best communities as far as doing the budget and being open about.
Thank you, Councilmember Widmer. Yes, well, Robert Avadia, he has a big impact in the budget.
No, I said he did a good job.
He actually, he spends the most money, okay?
Yes, he does.
Public Works, just to let everyone know.
No, that's not the most money.
The chief spends the most money.
Oh, sorry.
The second most money.
Well.
Paying attention to those meetings, guys.
Anyway, okay.
All right. So any other member of the board, council, have a comment? Any questions? Can I call for a motion to approve the 2526 budget?
Can we confirm that there's no public comment? I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yeah, there wasn't.
I did, Mona, I think, in the very beginning. Thank you. No, 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 it was going fast. All right. So I'll make the motion, since I've got some shy councilors up here. I'll make, you can second it, okay? I'll make the motion to adopt the five accompanying resolutions that are in the packet, having to do with operations and capital budget, salary and benefit resolution for unrepresented staff, 2526 salary and classification schedule, GAN limit appropriations, and the Town Master Fee Schedule. May I have a second?
Second.
I can do it, but I can arm wrestle.
Fight it out.
I'm going to let the vice mayor second it. And any comments or questions at this time? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All in -- the motion passes unanimously with all members present. Going on to item number 11, which has to do with our consideration and appointments to various town committees and planning commission. I'll turn this over to City Clerk Anthony Suber.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a routine item for us to consider, our annual appointments to the various town committees and commissions. We run a variety of different postings throughout the year to recruit, and over the last few years, we've had a few midterm vacancies that have been recruiting on an ongoing basis. I'm going to review some of those vacancies, and then I'll mention the applicants that we have. I do want to note, one of the applicants that was listed for the Transportation Committee also submitted an application for the Audit and Finance Committee that I emailed out today, and they are here present, and some of the committee members or some of the applicants have noted that they would like to, you know, speak to their qualifications. So on the Audit and Finance Committee, we have two vacancies. Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee, there are two vacancies. The Environmental Programs Committee has two vacancies, and then our Park and Recreation Committee has two vacancies. One's a regular seat for four years, and the other one's a foundation seat. And then lastly, we have one vacancy on the Planning Commission. So the Audit and Finance Committee, the two vacancies are to fill four-year terms. Those terms won't expire until June 30th of 2029. We have three applicants now. The staff report noted that there were three applicants, but we had one of our very well-known applicants, Mr. Bob Palito, step down and, you know, opened that spot up for two of the other applicants, one of them Stephen Brickley, the other one Suzanne Jane. For the Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee, we have two applicants for those two vacancies, Samantha Michelle and Steve Seabolt. I believe both are in attendance today. The Environmental Programs Committee has two vacancies, one's for a four-year term that expires in 2029, and the other one's for a midterm vacancy. Unfortunately, to date, we still don't have any applications for that committee, so maybe we'll get some people after today. For the Park and Recreation Committee, there are two vacancies. One is for a midterm that expires in 2026, and the other one is for a foundation seat that expires in '27. We don't have an applicant for the regular seat, but we do have an applicant for the foundation seat. That's the current incumbent, Mr. Walter Robinson. And then lastly, the Planning Commission has one vacancy, and that's for a term expiring in 2029, and we have two candidates for that, Mr. Bob Palito and Mr. Steve Seabolt. With that, the council is fairly aware of the process. You can consider an appointment in one motion. However, we'd like to identify the specific terms for those committees that have varying terms, or you can call candidates up individually to speak to their qualifications at your pleasure and discretion.
Thank you, Anthony. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you all for caring about your town, to want to spend your time volunteering on these various committees. It's really an honor and a privilege to be on committees. You get to discuss and plan and have an impact, I think, on the direction and the health and well-being of the town. I started on the Environmental Programs Committee in 2006, and it was very rewarding, and I've served on other committees over the years. So I guess we'll just go down the list. Does that sound reasonable? And we'll start with the Audit and Finance Committee. At this time, we have two vacancies to fill for a four-year term expiring 2029, and at this time, we have two applicants, Stephen Brickley and Suzanne Jane.
And just as, we have three. Samantha Michelle, her name wasn't included in the packet, but she did also indicate that she wanted to be considered for that, but she's in attendance today as well.
Okay.
And so she also applied for the Transportation Committee.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for correcting me. Would any of these three applicants like to speak to us about why you're at -- Stephen? Yes. Nice to see you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. It's been a long, long haul. Some of you, so good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. Some of you may know me in full length, because I've met you in person, but like Anthony, you probably know me as the little square that's attended just about almost every Audit and Finance Committee since about four years ago when we joined Atherton. So I have a real interest in it. So I wrote some comments on here. I don't, I don't get the chance to speak about myself and the things that I've done, so I'm going to use this opportunity to do that.
You do have only three minutes.
Feel real good about it. Okay. So thanks for that opportunity. I'm honored to be considered. My wife Lori and I have lived in Atherton for four years. I've remotely attended most of Audit and Finance Committees over the last four years. I'm very interested in this committee and the long-term financial strength and to contribute my experience. The committee's work, including items such as reviewing audits, advising on budget policies, safeguarding long-term fiscal health, can benefit from my financial and regulatory experience. I've been a certified public accountant since 1985. I started my career with KPMG. I've run a CPA firm for 40 years, mostly focused on tax planning. I'm an owner and CFO and the chief compliance officer. I've done a lot of things. I have a registered investment advisory firm managing about $850 million in assets for 160 families. This work is really particular to the kinds of things that I've seen, in that to run firms like this, you've got to do financial forecasting, you've got to do budgeting, you've got to have internal controls. You've got to do budgeting. You've got to have internal controls. You have to have compliance. You have to have fiduciary oversight. And that's just something that I've done for so long. The firm's registered with the Securities and Exchange Commission, which has oversight of the firm. We've been a FINRA-regulated firm for 19 years. So the regulatory environment is not new to me at all. It's changing, but it's not new. I've been a plan trustee, a plan administrator and fiduciary for our company Defined Benefit Plan and 401K Plan. Defined Benefit Plan, obviously smaller than the cities at CalPERS, but the inner workings of a Defined Benefit Plan without boring people too much is very similar whether the plan is small or whether the plan is large. There's actuaries, there's investment performance, there's risk analysis. And this common topic that we have here, or at least in the committee meeting, of rising and falling discount rate assumptions. That stuff I deal, I've been dealing with for as long as I could remember. So I don't get lost on complex financial topics. I get interested instead. They might confuse me for a while, but I dig further and I ask more questions. So I've attended most of the Finance Committee meetings. I've studied the town's budget, believe it or not. There's audit cycles. I've looked at reserve accounting. Robert, right, planning decisions. I've gotten to know some of you over time and I understand what the role of that committee is, kind of. I want to understand more about that because I want to outstep my bounds, which I tend to do. And the outgoing chair has encouraged my candidacy. So I think that reflects what she knows about me and my qualifications. I got a bunch of experience in boards and councils and societies of CPAs and AICPA. I just think that with that kind of going on with the rest of this, I just somehow had a genuine interest in doing this. And I put in my application, I don't quite know where it comes from, but I'm fascinated with the inner workings of Atherton and I want to learn more. And that's why, that's why I'm applying. So hopefully you'll consider me.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Does any member of the council have a question, follow-up question for Stephen? No? Okay, thank you. Suzanne Jane?
Hello. Thank you. I've met a couple of you. Elizabeth, you and I have met. Bill, you and I have met. And Robert, we've, we've met. I got interested in the committee last year when one of my fellow Athertonians recommended that I think about it. I have always been involved in finance throughout my career. I started, I love accounting. I guess we have some commonalities. I love accounting. I got a scholarship for an accounting place. I studied it when I went to business school. And then I started my career at Hewlett Packard in finance and planning, continued on at a consulting firm after business school. It was a consulting firm that was bought by KPMG. And worked at a few startups and landed at Cisco Systems and led the whole implementation of their Oracle system there. In my, and then I became a mom and did a lot of volunteer work. I've been on several boards. I'm always on the Finance Planning Committee. And I'm, I love Atherton. We raised our family here. We've been here for over 20 years. And I just want to offer my talents and interest to the Financial Planning Committee, to the Audit and Finance Committee and.
Thank you.
It's, it's been my career and I'd like to volunteer and help.
Appreciate you volunteering for this and coming to speak with us tonight. Does any member of the council have a question for Suzanne? Not at this time. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you being here. So Samantha, hi. Come on up. Sorry, I didn't have you on my note here.
Probably weren't able to read my application, so I'll hit some of the points. Like Steve, I'm also a CPA. And like Suzanne and my mother, my son just graduated from Ensignal. So now I can actually attend the entire finance meeting because I have to go pick him up at 2:50 and finance meeting starts at 2:00. And so I'm putting my hat in the ring. I'm a special kind of CPA. I audit governments. And the governments that I audit are mostly cities in California. Last fiscal year, fiscal year 2324, three of my clients were in the San Mateo County. So I, I have to say, my, I'm intimately familiar with Measure A, Measure W, C.CAG, the GAN limit, single audits, federal grants, TDA money, and the various ways that different cities organize their financial systems and the way they decide to account for different things, whether it be break it up into four accounts or just keep it in one account, different funds. That's my expertise. So with that, I'd like you to consider me for the Audit and Finance Committee. If not, I'll be able to attend the meetings anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your application. You sound great. Any questions from any member of the council?
Also, you submitted for Transportation as well, is that correct?
I smell Mayor Holland encouraged me to. This is my, I did this in May. I applied for this one in May. It was my first.
Fine, okay. Thank you.
And Transportation. Okay. Okay. So what's the pleasure of the council? Do you want to take them one at a time now that we, their examples of their credentials are fresh in our minds to go ahead and just choose two? Want to make a motion to? Okay. Just vote on each one. All in favor of?
Mayor Lewis, can we confirm that there's no other public comment after this presentation?
I keep forgetting about the public, you know. Is there any other members of the public like to speak on this item? Do we have any public online? Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Mona, for keeping me on track here. I'm sorry. So, yes.
Yvonne Walker. Ann Walker.
Oh, good. Okay. See, I don't see any raised hands.
Ms. Walker, you have the floor.
Okay. Sorry, I was trying to let you see me, but it won't let me do that. That's okay. It is me, Ann Walker. I'm the outgoing chair of Audit and Finance. And I apologize that I was not aware of the third candidate, so I can't say anything about her. But I do know Steve Brickley because I've spoken with him in person and he's come to many of our meetings. And I carefully read his application and Suzanne Jane's and I strongly support them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And thank you for your service the last eight years on the Finance Committee.
You're quite welcome.
Yes. Okay. So we're gonna take applicant Stephen Brickley for the Audit and Finance Committee. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Stephen, welcome aboard. You got a unanimous vote from the council. Thank you so much. And the next one would be Suzanne Jane. I get all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our time to pick between them.
I know. It's hard.
I really wish I had two positions, so.
Well, there's always next year and there's always.
Somebody going off next year.
And we do, yeah. So. I just love that we have more applicants than we have seats for. And if you don't get on this committee this time, there are other committees to be involved in and you can always go and attend the meetings. I know our former. No. So, okay. So there's, there's three and two. So.
So she's wrong.
Right. So Suzanne, thank you. Suzanne Jane. Of course you can make a comment.
I just want to say it's, it's a pleasure to see so many qualified candidates apply for this position. Historically, Audit and Finance has not been the most popular committee. And, and it, but it has been since I think Steve applied three or four years ago and has patiently waited until there was an opening. And I hope that you will, Samantha, do the same. I appreciate your experience and your interest and welcome you to the committee. I do have to say, in some ways, I'm sorry that we didn't only have one candidate because we could have supported if she were willing to accept it, Ann Walker, to take a reappointment. But she's had two terms and she's been terrific as the chair and she will be missed. But I'm sure she'll also remain involved as the prior chair has done. So it's great to see the interest in this committee. And I think this is an extremely strong committee. So thank you very much for applying. And I personally look forward to your advice and counsel.
And I would just like to point out that Anthony regularly points out when we have openings coming up and there's an opening. Mr. Hill's term is expiring next year on the 20, you know, the end of this month on the 26th. You know, 26, 2026. So there's always an opportunity next year. And many of the other committees have, there's a table that Anthony has that shows when all the expirations are. So if you're interested in any committee, you should look at those and point out that we do have a Park and Rec Committee that's open and we do have Environmental Programs needs as well. So anyway.
Okay. So just bringing it back and confirming that the two new committee members for the Audit and Finance Committee is Stephen Brickley and Suzanne Jane. We thank Samantha for her application and talking to us tonight. The next item up is the Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. It has two vacancies to fill, one a four-year term and one a midterm vacancy. So we have only two applicants for the council consideration. One is Samantha Michael and the other is Steve Sebold. Samantha, do you want to tell us why you went Transportation? You did such a good job, but we all have to get around. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Would you rather the two-year term so that in two years you could potentially switch to Audit and Finance? Or would you rather do four years on Transportation?
May I only be on one committee at a time?
No, there's no rules for it. But if you, if you personally only want to be on one committee at a time, which it doesn't seem like it, it's up to you.
I can be on two committees.
Good. Love it. Multitasking. Okay. Okay. Steve Sebold, is he here? Don't, is he online? No, he's not here.
On or not?
Okay, well, let's.
He was planning on being here, he told me, that he was coming.
Okay. So let's bring it back and Vice Mayor asked a salient question about a four-year term or the shorter term for Samantha. Go ahead.
You can make a motion.
Oh, he's gonna make a.
That's what you're looking for.
I am, yes.
So I would make a motion to support Steve Sebold for the four-year term and Samantha for the four-year term.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, motion moved and seconded. All in favor?
And no public comment online.
Anthony, no public comment online.
Wait, just to clear, that means because she's doing a partial term, she could then do two other full terms. We might be getting her for 10.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
What I'm saying. Okay, great.
And Suzanne, did you want to say something? There's a member of the public here.
Samantha, you and I haven't met, so we don't know each other. But I do know Steve Sebold. And it's, it's interesting that he's not here if he said he was here because he usually is. But I have worked with him on several different things and he is excellent. So as a member of the public, I definitely support him. And Samantha, I look forward to meeting you.
Great. Okay. So the motion from Councilmember DeGoya and the second by Councilmember Winmer. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. So his motion stands that we are accepting Samantha Michael filling the two-year term and Steve Sebold filling the four-year term on the Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. Okay. Moving on to the Environmental Programs Committee. We have no formal applicants. Do we have any member of the public who would like to jump up right now and say, I will serve on the Environmental Programs Committee? Just, you know, you can do a cartwheel or whatever, you know.
You'll be elected. You'll get right in.
Definitely. You know.
You don't even have to do an application.
We do have to do a background check, though. Okay, so I guess we have to let that pass. Okay. Park and Rec.
You're recruiting.
We will continue recruiting for the Environmental Programs Committee. Yes.
Do they have enough members to hold?
No, they have three.
Okay. The next is the Park and Rec Committee. The Park and Rec Committee has two vacancies. One is for a midterm vacancy that expires June 30th, 2026, for the Park and Rec Committee itself. And one is for a foundation. The Arts Foundation is an adjunct committee with a two-year term expiring June 30th, 2027. And there is one candidate for the council consideration and that is Walter Robinson. And he is an incumbent. I don't see Walter here. So.
He was nominated by the foundation.
He was nominated by the foundation, yeah, but not the Park and Rec Committee.
No, he applied for the foundation.
He's on it now.
Yeah, so he's an incumbent for the foundation seat.
Right.
Does the committee make?
I'll move supporting Walter Robinson to take the foundation seat.
I second that.
He currently is on the foundation.
Right, but his term expires.
He's a board member on the foundation. He's a board member on the foundation and he's also on Park and Rec currently.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
I think we need to take public comment.
Any public comments?
Thank you.
Seeing none. So Walter is going to be only on foundation, but not the other vacation.
There's foundation seats on Park and Rec Committee. Serving as a representative of the foundation on the Park and Rec.
Right. But we still have one vacancy to fill. I just want to make that really clear. So if anybody wants to serve on the Park and Rec Committee, it's a really, really important committee because the park is the jewel of our town. And Councilmember DeGoya is the council liaison on that committee. And he said he has a lot of fun. So tell your friends and neighbors.
You have a lot of fun on Park and Rec.
I like to have words put in my mouth.
You're always smiling when you're leaving, don't you think? Anyway, okay. Planning Commission. So we have one vacancy for Planning Commission for a four-year term, expiring June 30th, 2029. And there are two applicants for council consideration. One is Bob Palito and one is Steve Sebold. I don't see either of them here today. Do we have any comments about this? Yes.
I have a question for staff. The staff report shows that Bob Palito was appointed, looks like, to an interim term in 2023. So if he were appointed now, he'd still be eligible for another full term.
That's correct.
We appoint Bob Palito.
Second that.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of the public? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Abstained? Nothing? We've elected Bob Palito to serve a four-year term expiring June 30th, 2029 on the Planning Commission. So we have one more applicant and one more. Oh, no, we only have one vacancy, sorry. Okay. All right. We're done. Yes, that's great. I'm just so glad. So we still need to pound the, beat the bushes for environmental programs and one other candidate for the Park and Rec Committee. So about your friends and neighbors and people that you'd like to see serving. Our next item is item number 12. Our next item is item number 12, and it is a direction regarding the formation of a city charter. And I'm going to turn it over to George to tee it up. And then we have our committee members here also.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you mentioned, this is the discussion and direction regarding pursuit of a town charter. First, I'm going to start with the recommendation that's in the staff report. It's recommended that the council discuss and consider recommendations from the Charter City Standing Subcommittee and provide direction regarding possible formation of a town charter. So early in 2025, City Council formed a Charter City Standing Subcommittee to explore the advantages and disadvantages, if any, of becoming a charter city. And the report goes into some great detail. I'm not going to go through the entire report in great detail. The PowerPoint's going to cover just the high-level items. But transitioning to a charter city would provide the town with greater autonomy in terms of taxation and procurement and governance. However, for some of those areas, the practical benefit to the town is limited. The town must carefully consider all of the legal constraints, stakeholder concerns, and some potential litigation risks before moving forward. Furthermore, once a charter is adopted, the town must ensure that future decisions conform with the charter. Otherwise, the town would be required to amend the charter each time there's a potential conflict. Given the requirements of state law, pursuit of a charter is not an overnight endeavor. If the town foresees the possibility of state legislation that would negatively affect the town as a general law city but retain the town's independence as a charter city, pursuit of city chartership at that time might not be practical. While a charter may provide a layer of local responsibility, it also has the potential to provide an additional layer of advanced protection and opportunity. The town currently operates as a general law city under California law, meaning its governance policies and regulations are based in the Constitution by state statute. Shifting to a charter city model would grant the town greater autonomy over municipal affairs, and that's in quotes, particularly in such areas as elections, personnel matters, contracting, prevailing wages and taxation. However, the benefit is limited in many areas with those changes or powers, because they're sometimes reflected in new judicial interpretations and how state law defines what a municipal affair is. Staff report goes into what those municipal affairs are and how they benefit the town. So the next slide is, and the staff report ranges from minor to moderate to significant to undetermined. So in the minor to moderate category, the benefits could include elections, government, governance, employment, building services. There are some advantages there. In the moderate category, procurement and contracting, the town would have some benefits there. But one of the more significant benefits the town would have would be under its local tax authority. Although, to be clear, that is not the reason we are looking at the benefits of a charter city at this time. In the undetermined area, it's land use and zoning, and a lot of that is subject to the state's housing mandates. So let's see here. Sorry. The challenges of a charter city come in the area of legal and administrative complexity. Charters can be very, very simple documents, or they can be very, very complicated documents. There's increased exposure to litigation for employment policies and things like that. That's going to be very remote. Potential resistance from any stakeholders out there, like unions or things like that. None of those challenges were deemed insurmountable or significant in any way for the town adopting a charter. And so there's a timeline for it as well. We'd have to put this on a general municipal election. And as soon as we could do that would be November of 2026. So in early 2025, we're talking about public outreach and engagement. That's kind of what we're doing now. From mid-2025 to early 2026, if the council opts to move forward, we would be drafting the charter during that period of time. And then in mid-2026, we'd be holding public hearings and seeking council approval of the charter. And then in November 2026, there'd be a ballot measure and vote. There's two options on how to get there. Option one is to form an actual charter commission of residents. That actually is governed by state law. That would trigger an election. So that would postpone the timeline for a charter to just get the election of residents to serve on that commission in November of 2026. And then it extends it out to two more, three years before, beyond that. The other option is what the Standing Subcommittee recommends. It's continuing the work of the Standing Subcommittee as a public committee of city council representatives, engaging the public, just as we have in drafting of the staff report, drafting a draft charter, bringing that back to the city council for review and approval, and then submitting that to the voters as part of a public process of engagement over that time period. And that would follow the timeline I articulated in the last slide. So if the council opts to move forward with pursuit of a charter, the Subcommittee recommends proceeding with that option, too, making the Standing Subcommittee and moving that forward in that way and maintaining alignment with state laws where practical and doing a very, very limited in scope charter. So that's basically the staff report. The actual staff report has a lot more detail in it. I'm not going to go into that detail. And then the Subcommittee is available for questions as the council may.
Thank you. With that presentation and summary by the city manager on this agenda item, I'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments on this item. Yes, Samantha, please.
Samantha Michelle. The, I read the Subcommittee report. I didn't read the one that was in tonight's agenda. But I wanted to emphasize that if the charter document is more complicated and there needs to be staff that retains knowledge of that charter, any turnover or loss or gaps between that knowledge poses a risk to the city. And I just wanted to, that wasn't, that was mentioned, but it wasn't emphasized, that there needed to be staff, teaching staff how to respond to the charter legalese and that. Once those staff are taught, they, they may not be able to teach the next person. And I've seen that at charter cities, like not, like bigger charter cities that have just lost 30, 40% of their, their staff during COVID. And then they just scramble, and they don't know what they're doing, and they get everything wrong. And so just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you for your comment. Do you want to follow up, Mr. Widmer?
No, we don't.
I, I.
I got a comment, but I don't, I don't have any.
Any other member of the public? Any members online? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Mr. Widmer, you have.
Yeah. You know, I go back and forth on this. And at this point in time, there are benefits to being a charter city. I will not say that there are not. The city, the state can change very quickly what the requirements are for all the housing by just making a quick amendment. You know, today, my feeling is that, I feel that Atherton has an obligation to participate with the greater region on providing affordable housing. You know, many of us, our parents, you know, our children can't live in town, even though they have high-paying jobs, they can't afford to move into the area. I don't believe that we need to raise new taxes. Actually, I'm against that. I feel that we have plenty of money right now, and we have money to do the projects that we need, that we have. And there is a, you know, a limit to how many projects we can do at one time. Robert is great. Robert Ovadia, in this case, is terrific in doing this. But, you know, he has a certain limitation of what he can do, too. And managing lots of major projects at one time can be problematic. So, you know, I'm interested to see what comes back. I'm assuming that there'll be three votes to say, yeah, go forward and make the targeted charter. I'd like to see what it has, and hopefully it will mitigate my concerns. But, you know, I don't think that we need more taxes. When we first looked at it, it was a possibility that we did need new taxes. But I also feel that, I think that the town has done a terrific job with our housing program. And I hope that it's going to make a big change, you know, in allowing some of the less fortunate or even just children of ours to, to come back and live in this area. But, you know, I'm not interested in using this as a bar to keep from having additional housing stuff here. I just, I, I think we need to participate in that. And I'm, I just, I believe it's our obligation to, to, in a minor way, to participate in the area. And I don't want to bar that, especially when the state can just, you know, with a stroke of a pen, change that. So that's my concerns, but I'd love to see what you guys come back with. And that'll probably alleviate my fears, concerns, if you keep in mind my comments. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Widmer. Any other member? Diana?
I'd like to comment.
Yes.
I read through all the pros and cons in the report, and I personally think it's a waste of time and money to pursue this. I think that there's very, there's a lot of time and money and effort involved in pursuing this and maintaining it over time. And I see very little gain for us. So I think it's a waste of money. Against it.
Member of the committee? Yes.
Sure, I'll make a comment. So I don't think it's a waste of time. I think that we have seen the state of California exercise authority based on certain very highfalutin goals that don't necessarily relate to the local needs and concerns and character of the jurisdictions that those requirements impact. And I'm not just talking about housing. I think that there's a will in the legislature to assert state control over local jurisdictions. The reason that I think a charter city is worth exploring, and, and I think Bill's right, it's really important what the char, what, what is in the charter that we would propose to our residents. But the committee is recommending that that charter be narrowly tailored. I don't think it's going to take an enormous amount of time or expertise to put that together. We've looked at this once before at a time that we were challenged around taxes, because we needed to build this town center, and we didn't have the money to do it. We're in a completely different situation now. Taxes is not something that we need or that I personally would support us pursuing. But the idea of asserting any kind of home rule controls away from state controls, which are not focused on what this community needs, I think are really valuable for us to explore. And that's not disagreeing with anything that Councilmember Widmer said about affordable housing. I completely agree. We need affordable housing. Our problem with affordable housing, which we all know, because we've spent so much time exploring it, is that we only have two types of housing in this town. We have single-family residents, and we have schools. And we've rezoned those schools to enable them to build affordable housing in townhouses and apartments. And we can't make that happen. They've got to raise the money to do it. But we're challenged. And the state's solutions for everything where it's one-size-fits-all doesn't work for us. We're a unique community, and we need to have as much control over our unique community as we can have. And it's true that the state can change that just by declaring certain issues to be issues of statewide concern, in which case a charter city doesn't have any real independence from that. But there's going to be changes in the state as time goes, and there's some things that might be considered issues of statewide concern in one year, and that, that be changed in another year. And the question is, well, does this give us any kind of additional flexibility? I don't think it costs us very much money. I do think that, that, that premise is based on us having a very narrowly tailored charter. And it does present some different issues, but you're always going to have issues in a jurisdiction. And right now, we have the issues of, well, exactly, we're still going to have to say, what are the state laws? How do they impact us? And what do we, what, what could be independent from the state laws, which is not an issue that we can explore right now, because we're not a charter city. But if we were, it would. So I think it's worth pursuing it and getting a proposed charter written. We can all look at it and see if it's something we want to support. But I, I think the idea that this is going to be a huge expense is ridiculous. Because if we maintain a narrowly tailored charter, it's not going to be a great deal of more expense. It's, it's, and, and in terms of putting all of the resources in one or two staff members, certainly there's knowledge of whatever charter you draft is going to be managed at the staff level. But it's principally in terms of the content managed at the legal services level. And we have an outstanding legal services team that's worked on this for other cities. And I have no worry about being able to craft a narrowly tailored charter.
Can I ask you a question? What is the narrow target? Because we said we're not interested in taxes. All of the attempts of charter cities to do anything to block housing have all failed and have very immediately were swept under the carpet. So what is the narrow focus that would be, that we're talking about here?
All you have to do is see the charter that's written.
Well, can you summarize it for everybody? We're all here.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, the last charter, we looked at about two or three pages.
It was one, one to two pages, fairly short.
But why? Just tell me why we would want it? What's the why?
One of the whys is when you realize you need a charter and you're not a charter city, it's too late to become a charter city. And a charter city gives you a little layer of protection. So if the state does adopt a piece of legislation that, as a general law city, would typically apply, whether that, that could be in any area, would typically apply to a general law city, but it doesn't apply to a charter city, not a charter city, want it to not apply. So if we were a charter city, we have the choice. We conform to the state legislation or craft something.
Vice Mayor, you're a member of the Charter City Committee.
Yes. So we stopped our fingers when we were a charter city right now. There'd be no difference for us right now, from my assessment. And we use it to increase our taxes. It would change nothing about what we are required to do for housing. And the housing is what the public requested us to look into this, because there was some belief that it would afford us protection for our current mandate by the state. And it's becoming very clear that's not the case. I go back and forth on whether or not this is worthwhile, because I, knowing that it would change nothing tomorrow, what's the point? But I, in some ways, view this as like having an earthquake preparedness kit. We'll be happy if we have it, if we need it. Or it's just going to sit in our closets, getting dust and never get used, and feel like a big expense that we have to pay. So I, I don't, I keep going back and forth on whether or not this is worth it. I think there's, what we are going to be challenged with is that the main benefit is our ability to tax. And I want to do some clarification around the taxing in that it does not give us like a big red button to tax you without vote. It's still, any taxes would have to be voted on by the public. So it's not giving us some, you know, supercharged ability to tax everyone without the public. It changes the flavors of taxes we can present on a ballot, and it changes our ability to set voter thresholds for taxes. So it doesn't give us a carte blanche to start taxing. I just want to make sure that's really clear. If we move forward with that, I think there's going to be a lot of concern around that. So that's my comment at the moment. I'm.
So my experience has been, in 2015, 2017, council took a look at doing this, becoming a charter city, specifically to raise money and to create a 1% real estate transfer tax, to give us more money to be able to. to give us more money to be able to build our new town center. And after we really looked at it, and we, we never got far. We decided not to. For one reason, the council chambers was filled with real estate agents, you know, clamoring at us to not create that 1% transfer tax and to tax the residents. So that is a, the, the ability to tax more easily and freely, even though you require a ballot measure, you know, it's, it, it doesn't feel good to me. But the benefits of being a charter city, I am still not convinced that they really would serve our small town of Atherton of 7,000 residents. If you look up and down the state of California, the, the majority of charter cities are very large, 20,000-plus residents, because it works better when you have that type of a large population. I think Redwood City is a charter city. Palo Alto is a charter city, you know? And you'll find spotted throughout California, smaller cities. At the end of the day, so the, the committee is recommending option two, how to form the charter city, but it has to be submitted to the voters. Okay? We have to get 50 plus 1% of the voters to approve a charter city format. The problem with going out to the voters, as you know, is fraught with ifs, ands, or, you know, speculations, and it really depends on the campaign that's run and how the campaign is run and what the voters are told this is going to do. And then that in itself just puts ice in my veins because, you know, that kind of a campaign is, is, it's distracting to what we need to do every day to keep the town running in a happy way, kind of a thing. I am not opposed to the committee continuing their work to formulate a more flushed-out plan to bring back to council for more deliberation, for public review, for all of us to have an idea to, now that we kind of know about it a little bit more, to see what they come back with and to evaluate it. This member of the public, Samantha, I had not even thought about the brain trust, because if you have a legal document, you know, kind of a, a Bible that you're reading from in, in your city, it, it's just not institutional knowledge that you're working from, you know, the, the staff on, on, they're tenured. But it's got to be in black and white somewhere. So I don't know exactly how that works for you. So that's kind of where I'm coming down. If we are going to take, it, it, it takes a vote of, of the people, and the staff report kind of talks about, we do this, do this, do this in 2025, we can put it on the ballot by 2026. I think option one, there would be a longer lead time for getting it on the ballot because there's, you know, you've got to get a majority voted at the council, or it has to go out to the residents, and you'd get, have to get at least 15% of the Atherton voters to agree to this. So that's kind of where I'm coming down on it. If we were going to vote yes or no right here and right now, city manager, do you want to give me some advice?
Well, the direction needed this evening is whether the council wants to continue the work of the subcommittee, draft a charter to return to the city.
Right. And so it's not agreeing to
Correct.
... launch a city charter, but to draft, let's see what you can, you're going to come up with. And if it's narrowly focused, like Councilmember DeGoya has, you know, described, that may be simple and straightforward, and it may feel better if we look at it that way, but weighing it against all the other concerns and questions. Okay? That's, Councilmember DeGoya, of course, you can come.
Yeah, I just want to address the tax issue. The, I, I think the tax issue is a total red herring. We can, i- if, if this council wanted to propose to the town of Atherton that we increase taxes, we can do it right now. We can, it has to go before the voters. We'd have to propose something on the ballot. But 50% plus one of the voters can pass a general tax right now. We have to approve it and put that on the ballot. And if you're a charter city that doesn't include a transfer tax provision, and nobody is advocating that it would, then if anybody wanted to put a transfer tax provision before the voters, that you'd have to amend the charter and put a transfer tax in there, and the voters would have to vote for it. So it's exactly where we are today. It's a total red herring to focus on that issue because nobody's proposing it. All of it's being proposed now is that the subcommittee work with staff to draft a proposed form of narrowly tailored charter and that that come back to the council.
Okay. And I just
That's not pushing it to the voters, that's just bringing it back to the council.
I just want to clarify and ask you, you're saying it's a 50% plus one or a transfer tax right now, but if we went out for a parcel tax?
We can't do a transfer tax now. That's for a general tax.
But if we went out for our, if we went out, you know our residents would never do a general tax. I mean, getting a parcel tax passed, which we had for many, 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 many years, a couple of seasons ago, we couldn't get it passed. And that takes two-thirds, that's 67%, and that's a hard bar to reach. Okay? So, and Mr. Widmer?
Yeah. And I, I trust everybody that's on this council. We've worked together for a number of years, some very long periods of time. And it's the restrictions that will be placed on, on the next council. Okay? Because somebody could go wild with, you know, five years, 10 years down the line. I mean, you may be opening Pandora's box. So, you know, like I said, I'd like to see what the, what the committee comes back at, and hopefully they'll come back with certain restrictions and things like that, and allow us to have some form of home rule in areas where it's important to the town of Atherton and the residents of Atherton. However, you know, we'll, we'll go see. I'm, I'm not saying, don't move forward, bring something back, because I, oh, we have nothing firm to look at today to make a decision on, in my mind. And, and while I, you know, I hear my colleague down at the other end indicating the money, but I, I think, you know, $25,000, $30,000 is worthwhile spending to at least look at this a little further before we make a final decision.
Thank you, Councilmember Widmer. Diana?
I think that if, if, I would request that if it goes forward, which I don't, personally don't think we should, but if we go forward, I'd like to request that we have a really strong answer to the question, why? An answer of asking, trying to get 51% of our population to set, to vote for a prophylactic thing when we don't even know what it is we're protecting against, some law that may come in the future, seems to me, I don't think you're going to get your 51%. And in my opinion, after our survey of all the things that people wanted, if we were to go out to the public to put anything on the ballot, it'd be about things like drainage and issues that people really care about. So if we go forward with this, I would ask that you have a strong answer of why you want to do it and what it is.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, any follow-up?
I'm happy to be, to help draft and look into, we didn't review the draft. So we've just reviewed the staff report, so we haven't gone in depth on that. I'm happy to keep spending time with Rick and George and Mona on that. I do think Samantha brought up a good question about staff turnover. Some people are threatening to retire at some point, so I would like to know if there are
Some people?
I don't know. He's never going to do it, but I'm wondering if
Retire, Stacey?
We'll see. Who knows? But I, I am wondering how being a charter can affect recruitment. And I, we didn't talk about it in the
No.
... subcommittee, so I don't, you don't, I'm not putting you on the spot to know, but I'm curious if that might have some effect in the future.
All right. So I think we have direction from council?
Actually, you're going to need a motion. You're actually changing the charter or the marching orders for the standing subcommittee. So you're going to be directing the standing subcommittee. Can you work on drafting charter and returning that to the
I'll make that motion. You could put words in my mouth if you'd like, because I want to make sure they're correct. And do I have a second? Mayor?
Sure, second.
A vice mayor's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, one.
Any abstentions? The motion carries four to one with all members present. Okay, moving on. We have item number, item number 13 is a consideration of city council liaison position for the Atherton Disaster Preparedness Team, which is the ADAPT board. And I'm going to let George kind of tee this up for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At the June 4 study session, as a potential future agenda item, a member of the council asked that the council consider appointment of a council liaison to the ADAPT board. The council asked that staff place the item on the June 18 agenda tonight for discussion and direction. Council policy authorizes the mayor to make liaison appointments, primary and alternate, to each of the town's committees and to some of our respective regional boards and bodies. As noted, there are also liaisons to external groups, the Holbert Palmer Park Foundation and the Menlo Park Fire Protection District, and that would be similar to what's being considered this evening to ADAPT, as ADAPT is a separate board. And the council policy lines out what a liaison's responsibility is. That's in the staff report as well. Like the Park Foundation, ADAPT is a separate 501(c)(3) led resident group. They, they were formed in 1999 as a proactive group of Atherton residents partnering with the police department to educate community and aid fellow residents in preparing for major emergencies and natural disasters. They are independent of the town and have their own governing board. Different than the Park Foundation, however, the town does provide some general financial support to ADAPT via the town's budget approved by the city council as part of the police department's budget. These funds don't go directly to ADAPT, rather they are spent on behalf of ADAPT in support of ADAPT's mission and objectives. For example, funds could be spent on maintaining emergency supply trailers, assembly point supplies, publication materials, training programs, et cetera. In addition, staff provide general support to ADAPT during regular meetings and training. ADAPT personnel, to include their board, provide decentralized emergency education in response by assembly area via the block captain or assembly point captain model. Their mission and programs are designed to assist residents in developing emergency plans and improving their overall readiness, creating and leading training exercises and drills in the community, disseminating emergency preparedness materials and resources, and facilitating organizational meetings with the police department, schools, town officials, and assembly areas. In the event of an emergency response situation, representatives from ADAPT report up via communication channels, ham radios, or other means on their assembly area status to the town's emergency operations center, where the EOC incident commander, typically city manager, will make decisions for organizational response to the disaster or localized emergency. During an emergency, ADAPT serves as a very critical link to the community at large. Adapters, not all adapters, some adapters are cert qualified and trained, but most adapters probably are not. As such, the town does not use ADAPT as part of any field search or rescue or response. However, we do use them for small-scale response and engagement. The police department has and will continue to use adapters to assist with community events, parking management during those events, field support, shelter staffing, neighborhood alert and information dissemination, and windshield surveys, which are basically field reports from the field back up to the EOC. In these instances, town staff direct the role of and are responsible for adapters during an emergency response or community activity, and they're considered emergency service workers. Town sees the role of ADAPT most closely aligned with its core mission, helping residents prepare for emergencies, and this is best facilitated through the dissemination of educational material, training programs, and response drills that are designed to enhance the preparedness of one resident, expanding out to encompass an entire neighborhood. It is this neighbor-to-neighbor connection that builds the neighborhood and ultimately community-wide preparedness. Over the past few years, ADAPT has gone through some various board transitions and has struggled to retain membership on the board and participation in the larger community. You may have heard some of that via some public comments sent to the city council. While the overarching mission and goals of ADAPT remain relatively consistent, the methodology for engagement with their membership and general philosophy of approach has shifted as the boards evolved and board presidents have changed. In May, staff raised the possibility that the town might be able to contract with the city of Menlo Park for a portion of the time of their full-time emergency preparedness coordinator position, about eight to 10 hours a week. Having that onboard resource and expertise may greatly assist ADAPT with fulfilling its mission. Menlo Park has expressed interest in this possibility. It's part of their budget that they're reviewing this month, and we'll hear back from them on June 25th. They've committed to hearing, giving us feedback on June 25th, so hopefully we hear back from them on June 25th, whether they'll offer that up to us. As mentioned before, ADAPT is a important community resource, and the council can direct that there be a council liaison, but staff recommends that a, a different approach, and that is allowing staff to take a more active role and directing staff to take a more active role with ADAPT. Our current position is they are a separate board, 501(c)(3), where we're there as a resource, we're there to help, but we're not actively engaged conducting, assisting them with disseminating information or assisting them with their overall management and connection with the community and providing more of a leadership role with them. We can certainly do that with council's direction, because it will take staff time and resources to accommodate that, along with looking for that eight to 10 hours a week from that emergency preparedness coordinator, Menlo Park. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open it up to the public for any comments or questions at this time. Any member of the public wish to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Susan Moore, and I'm actually the president of the Atherton Disaster Preparedness Team. And yes, we are definitely in the process of rebranding and reorganizing. Based upon George's comments, I had submitted a page of information based upon that and based upon some new information I've heard. I actually am totally 100% supportive of possibly using Brandon from the Menlo Park Fire District in supporting our adapter organization. We definitely have been struggling with getting enough candidates and also supporting our board, and so I think that would be a really wise choice.
Thank you very much.
And I believe Christine would also like to talk.
Okay, all right. Christine, come on up.
I'm just going to read through what I sent you earlier.
Could you
Oh, sorry, am I not close enough? This is not close enough. Is that better?
Your name?
Christine David.
We, we all know who you are, but we just wanted for the record. Thank you, Christine.
ADAPT board member currently. I am here today to, as a current member of ADAPT board, where I've been actively involved just for several years. I would like to address the evolving landscape of emergency preparedness and how it affects our organization's ability to serve Atherton effectively. The emergency preparedness sector is undergoing significant transformation, particularly considering the devastating fire disasters that recently impacted Southern California through a sulfur loop. These events have highlighted critical gaps in coordination and communication between emergency response organizations. I understand that San Mateo County is similarly reassessing collaboratively how emergency preparedness organizations function both independently and collaboratively during local emergencies and disasters. So everybody's kind of reassessing what's going on and what's, what are the best practices? As these reassessments occur, there will naturally be a trickle-down of best practices right down to our local town level. It's a time of transition and opportunity to redefine. ADAPT's had a lot of transitions and challenges, which have been noted. We've experienced several major transitions in our leadership, from the Tom Prissing model to the Tom Owen model, and now we have our new president who just spoke. So it may be a good time for us to fundamentally redefine our organization's role and effectiveness. Currently, our small volunteer team is tasked with understanding the complex emergency preparedness market, and it is complex. Defining our organization's identity, managing public representation, managing Defining our organization's identity, managing public representation, maintaining our website, which is not currently up to date, coordinating promotions and drills, supporting monthly board meetings and activities. However, we face a critical challenge, as Susan said. Despite these extensive responsibilities, we have not seen corresponding growth in our board membership or volunteer base. The need for professional assessment is what I recommend. Given the broader redefinition occurring throughout the emergency preparedness sector, ADAPT's current volunteer structure is insufficient, in my view, to handle these professional-level responsibilities effectively. Gosh, sorry, I have to whip this over. Because there's quite a complexity of modern emergency preparedness and requires expertise that goes beyond what our dedicated but limited volunteer base can provide. So my, I respectfully recommend to the mayor and town council to consider one key action, and that is to hire an emergency preparedness specialist, as George was commenting about. I think it's a great idea, and I think it's very important for that emergency specialist to go from the top all the way down and then help you all define what you want from this organization, and then you can help, we can help define that. So that's what I propose. Is, are there any questions or?
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your volunteerism.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public at this time wish to speak? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council for comments. Member of the council have a question, comment? Okay, Stacy, vice mayor?
So ADAPT is a very important organization for the town, and it's also going through transition problems, as you guys have commented. I don't think a liaison is the solution. I think we need to throw some staff and some money into fixing some of your tactical problems, like your website, some of the, you guys know your list. So from my perspective, I would love to see the board sit down with staff and have a list of requests to come back in front of the council for us to sign off on, so that we can help you. We want to be the bridge. We want you guys to be successful, and I think it's more than just a liaison. So I, that would be my vote, so that we can help you guys bridge this transition and have you guys go forth as an independent, successful group with our help.
Thank you. Diana?
I agree with what Stacy just said, and I would want to add that if we can't get the Brandon order time position, then we should hire a professional, whether it's part-time or even just for the interim year to get things organized, so a short-term thing. Should identify a budget for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Widmer?
I've been associated with CERT since two thousand nine. I'm a CERT and also an area coordinator. My experience and my viewing of the situation is that parts of the city are very effective using ADAPT, and parts of the city, it's nonexistent, nor is it even desired. There are parts of, of the town where residents have panic rooms and things like that, and they don't participate in anything. They just handle their own stuff. They have their own security forces, things like that, so they don't participate. So I, I'm not sure that we need a town-wide thing. I think that we do need, and I've, George and I looked the other day at what ADAPT's website, which is sparse, but it does have how to do a go-bag, how to get prepared, those type of things. Those are, those are out there. Maybe they could be prettied up, maybe they could be improved, but I'm not sure that it's as dire. Hey, you know, the website is like kaput. It's not. I think that in addition to encouraging people to participate and, and the people that, you know, Lindenwood, for example, Victoria Manor, parts of Selby, et cetera, I mean, there are people, there are places that are, are very active. They run their own drills. They have a mailing list. They're kept up, those type of things, and I think that that's, that's good. So we don't want to discourage that. We just want to bring others on board as such. I think we should encourage more people to get CERT trained. We do have a network of locations, gathering points, and, and that's a good approach. But I think that the way that we've drawn up our, our little areas leaves a lot to be desired, especially in areas like mine or down around Valparaiso, where things are drawn on the city lines as opposed to, you know, hey, we're not going to help you because you're across the street and you're Menlo Park, okay? So all that stuff, we need to have a common and a, and a good look at what we're doing. Be great input to have from the Fire District, but again, we don't want to have our areas segmented like was put together and we've asked several times for them to be changed, chief, and never changed, but it was not on your watch. So hopefully that's something that could come up. We could look at that. I think that we need to, ADAPT needs to get organized. I mean, it's just flip-flop back and forth. You know, people always enjoyed going to the massive drills, but I mean, how many people in the town are going to be cribbing a car? Not very many. They've never even been trained on it. They're just going to get hurt. Or how many people in town know how to assess a building to know whether or not to even go in there, is it going to fall down on them? So, you know, additional training is needed, but people need to know what the basics, what they're going to do, like keep track of your neighbors, and then, you know, certain people that have higher-level training, they would go do other things in conjunction with the town, the police department, and the fire department. So I think if we get our act together with, as George suggested, with, with some additional support, I think then at one point in time, then it may be appropriate to have a liaison, but I don't think the time is now. I think we need to get going with getting reorganized. I also believe, and I'd like to know really, at one time, you know, we talked to the previous chief, and chief, since you're here on your quarterly visit, you know, is there any funding from the Fire District to help us with bringing on a coordinator? Give us a comment. I'd appreciate it. Not to put you on the spot, but I did.
But you did.
I could commit that right now.
Thank you, Chief Lorenzen.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, Mark Lorenzen, Fire Chief, Menlo Park Fire District. That's a great question. We don't have specific funding set aside for funding a position. We do have money set aside to help any and all of our community groups, whether it is with, I think similar to you, helping with supplies, developing caches, training, advertising, things like that, but not funding a specific position.
What about website development, since you do have a CERT website?
Sure.
A lot of that could be applicable to, to ADAPT.
Right. We are, yeah, and, and we do similar things too, where we, we try very hard not to give money specifically to a 501(c)(3) or another organization or give grants, but where, where we can, if there's an organization that's struggling, we might be able to assist in some website development, since we have IT staff. Yeah, there's a variety of different things, and I don't want to commit to something particularly, but, yeah, we, we want to be your community partners and our preparedness community partners too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me while I'm up here? Okay, great. Yes, it was just a quarterly visit. This is just coincidence that this is up today.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any other councilmember? You want to follow up?
I just wanted to follow up and say that although the goal, George said this, but I want to highlight it a little bit more. Even though the goal has stayed the same with ADAPT, how we implement it has changed. And I think collectively, we agree that we are not, a majority of ADAPT is not CERT-trained, and that we aren't going to do search and rescue, and we're not going to do drills that are predominantly CERT people that are, you know, rescuing people. But on the other hand, we have a valuable role of being the eyes and ears of the city, because we will, in the end, be stuck in our homes and that we can, our neighbors are our best line of communication up to the city, up to the emergency center to say, there's a tree down over here, or there's an earthquake in, in a triage, and at least give information up to the, the emergency center that would take a lot longer for us to wait for our emergency responders. So there's a valuable role there, and I don't want that to fall to the wayside, because we had a very strong organization for many years, and it is, it is, is falling apart right now. So we really need to put the effort, and not only just giving the money to make the website and all that, but I do think we have to agree and redefine what the role is a tier lower than the, the statement. So what are the drills? The drills, we're in the park where we actually did put out fires and, you know, did all that kind of stuff. Well, what are the drills now if our model is that we're a communications organization? And are we still going to ask our members of ADAPT to walk the neighborhoods and then report back via walkie-talkies, two hams, back to George? And if that's still in place, then what kind of training do we do to continue that? We have not done that training in a couple of years now, to the best of my knowledge. So we need, if, if this is what we want the organization to do, let's strip it back to what the minimum and what we all agree it to be, and part of that is policy. So that's, part of that is a policy of what we want as a city, and then make sure that that happens. So if we get this help in, we don't, we do need help with doing the webpage. We do need help with mailing. We do need all of that logistics help. But we also need, as a community, to redefine the, the roles, and specifically, what are we asking our members to do?
So much. All right. Any other councilmember want to follow up on that? Rick?
I'll make a comment. I mean, I think ADAPT is really strong, and it's really important. And it's really important because we all know if there's an emergency, most likely of which would be a major earthquake, we're going to be on our own, and we have to take care of ourselves. We can't count on any organization coming in here, including our police department, because people live so far away. We, we, that's what, that's the basis on which ADAPT was formed, and ADAPT, over time, has been very strong. I, I think that the strongest thing ADAPT does is, in its meetings, there's really valuable information that's presented, and the people that show up really appreciate it. So that part is really good. The problem is ADAPT has lost its ability to get those that pay attention to it to sign up to do work. And if ADAPT can't get its members to sign up to do work, it's not a problem with the city council. The city council shouldn't take that on. I, I think it's wrong for the city council to appoint a member to be a liaison of any organization that we're financially supporting. That, that should not, that is not our role. It presents too much potential conflict. ADAPT has to get its act together as ADAPT, and numbers of us on the city council actively participate in ADAPT. I think three of us, or two of us anyway, are area representatives within the town. So I, I think that the, the idea of bringing in a staffing support is valuable to consider. I think we should talk about that, and because, and it's not talk about that to support ADAPT. It's talk about that to figure out, well, what is the best way for Atherton to take care of itself as emergency disaster preparedness, which is the heart of what ADAPT's all about. But I, I don't know what the solution is for ADAPT, because it's, it's surprising to me that people aren't willing to step up and do work by joining ADAPT as board members and really working on it. They, you, previously, there was quite a large number of people that were very active on the board. So obviously, something has changed. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but I don't think that it's the city council's responsibility to fix that, and I don't think we should be appointing a liaison.
Okay. So I'm going to sum up. We are, I want to thank councilmember Hawkins-Manwellyan for bringing this topic to council. She requested that this agenda item would be on the agenda. She suggested that two weeks ago at our study session, and it's been a really good discussion. We've learned a lot over the last week about what the staff, Atherton staff can do and what can be done to help prop up the ADAPT organization. And that had been being discussed as the Menlo Park support person, so that still has to be flushed out. What's before us is to consider the possibility of a mayoral appointment of a liaison to the ADAPT board, and it appears to me that that is not something that I'm ready to do at this time. I do believe that it should be staff interaction and that as a council person, we should not be involved in the ongoing of the ADAPT board. I think we tried that one more time prior, and it didn't work, and we're not going to try it again. So sorry, Diane. I know you're passionate about it, but thank you.
Actually, no, I wanted us to just get help, and I, I didn't realize we'd get this much support for staff. Staff is by far the better choice.
Super. Thank you very much. So I think, does that end this? Do we have to have a motion on that?
No, I'm not. Hearing general consensus for staff to kind of step up their engagement with ADAPT, and also to try and find some ways to help them, pursue the Menlo Park issue when it comes forward, if it comes forward.
And bring back, and bring back to council, you know, items that council may fund, right, if there's a monetary thing. One more thing? Sure.
One clarifying question.
Just one more thing.
So not just staff in terms of helping with the website, but actually getting a professional. Either we hire or we share with Brandon. That's going to help make the whole thing, right?
If the Menlo Park thing doesn't pan out, then we're looking at alternative. That would be another dollar figure. That would come back to the.
Okay.
We would have to decide on adding that extra payroll person. Thank you, Chief, for being. Okay, the last two items on the agenda are items number fourteen and fifteen, and it will go very quickly. The item fourteen is city attorney performance evaluation and approval of an amendment to the city attorney contract. It's recommended that council review the staff report and consider adoption of the attached amendment to legal services agreement between the town of Atherton and Kronik Moskowitz Thiedman and Gerard, the city attorney contract. And it, I'll let Mona, our city attorney, kind of explain a little bit more about that, because it does involve adding a staff person, paralegal. Mona?
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. The, the city council did conduct a performance review of my legal services, and in response, there was a request, tentative approval, to make a contract amendment of a limited scope to that agreement. The two requests were to increase the hourly rate of paralegals and document clerks to two hundred to two hundred and twenty dollars an hour, which is still at the reduced rate that we offer our municipal service clients, but it is a little bit higher than is reflected now. The benefit to the town is that we have some excellent paralegals and document clerks. So to the extent there is a discovery or document production or some other thing that they can help with, it would be at a lower rate than the typical attorney rate that's charged. The fixed retainer remains at seventeen thousand dollars, so this doesn't really have a financial impact at all to the town, because it remains that way. The other request was to increase the reimbursement, or to establish, excuse me, a reimbursable rate for attorneys that work on matters that would be reimbursed to the town by third parties. So far, that has not been necessary. It would likely only even occur if there was, for example, a housing project or a development project that needed legislative approvals and the applicant was to reimburse. And we wanted that rate to not reflect the reduced municipal rate that we provide the town of Atherton, but be a little bit more commensurate with market. Again, very unlikely that that would happen, but in the event that it did, we wanted it to be reflected. So those are the two changes that are. So those are the two changes that are in the amendment to the legal services agreement before you tonight.
Thank you very much. You've heard the report. Any member of the public have a comment or question on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Any council members have a question or a comment on this? I'll call for a motion to adopt the amendment number two to the agreement for legal services between the town of Atherton and Chronic Moskowitz Teedman and Gerard, as presented in your agenda packet.
A move that we approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Widmer, second?
Second.
Vice Mayor, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously for all members present. Okay, item number 15 has to do with our city manager performance evaluation and approval of amendment to the city manager's employment contract. Mona, do you want to bring this up again? Thank you.
Thank you. The city council did also meet in closed session to conduct the performance review of the city manager, which it does annually, starting in the spring. The council concluded that the city manager had been performing outstandingly, and in response to that, wanted to provide him with a one-time $15,000 bonus for his contributions, notably the housing element certification by HCD, amongst other successes. There was also a proposed increase to reflect a cost of living adjustment in the amount of 2.7%, that would change the existing salary from $287,218 to $294,973. What is before you today is an employment agreement amendment that reflects both of those changes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just note that the cost of living, living adjustment of 2.7% is commensurate of all the other staff cost of living adjustments in the town, so it's not more or less, so it's just what everybody else has gotten for this year. So any questions or comments from members of the public? Any council member questions or comments? I'll call for a motion to approve amendment number 12 to the employment agreement between the town of Atherton and George Rodriguez. Councilmember Delevay, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Widmer, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously with all members present. Thank you very much, everyone, for staying with us tonight, I appreciate it. The meeting is now adjourned.